Right now between Breland's Boulevard and Court Street?
No, that's what I was saying is that on the south side of that block, there are properties that are actually residential. And I think we had another map in the last map in this presentation. Eric? Eric? Could we see the last map in the presentation? That one. The yellow properties are residential already. So, and that's why I said it's roughly those boundaries.
Any further questions?
So, what this allows is for some of those yellows to be converted actually to commercial. Is that correct?
No, the yellows are residential already.
Yeah, right.
It allows some of the red to be used for multifamily. The commercial in that red area stays commercial and it's intended for commercial. It doesn't change anything that would be allowed in that district other than to allow limited multifamily.
Well, okay, here's a question then. You know, it's...
And only in that geographic area.
I mean, let's say that a large commercial development came in the red and they were able to purchase, you know, three or four or five of those yellows and they wanted to incorporate that into their commercial property. Is that allowable? Could it be done and how would it be done?
It would be taken before the Planning Commission as a general plan amendment along with their project, which might be a conditional use permit or a precise plan of design. And it would be forwarded to the City Council because you can't change a land use designation without legislative input.
Yeah, all right.
And decision.
Seeing no further questions from the council at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. Are there anyone from the general public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Either further discussion or if the council's ready for action, I believe. As I understand it, we need to adopt the negative declaration and we can wrap the general plan amendment into the council bill if we desire to move forward on this. So I think two different actions as listed...
I'll move to adapt later then.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second on the negative declaration. Any further discussion by the council on that action? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? It's unanimous. Let's approve the negative declaration. The next item, the council bill 2008-42, if we can understand that includes a general plan amendment as was discussed, I'm ready for a motion.
So I move council bill 2008-42 with that small editorial change on a first reading and second reading, Prop. 26.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, it's carried unanimously. We have a third public hearing and it's related to some federal emergency management designations and flood control measures and so forth and would like to ask Public Works to provide a staff report on this item, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. This item relates to the federal management, emergency management agency's request to update our ordinance so that it reflects the ability to automatically adopt any revisions to their maps or other alterations that they may find appropriate through their various federal insurance studies. It's just the addition of the automatic adoption of any revisions, new maps, or alterations. If there's any questions, I'm here for you.
Any questions for staff? So this will just get us up to date to say what some of the flood improvements and so forth have been and get some of the language that we need to comply with that. Is that correct in a nutshell?
That is correct.
Doesn't this, Jeff, doesn't this take us away from the A-99 status?
The previous letter of map revision in 2007 accomplished that. This allows for the new maps that have been prepared dated August 28, 2008, to be adopted and any revisions thereafter to be automatically adopted.
So it's really the final act in the creek improvements, if you will, that have gone for many, many, many years.
Exactly.
Well, what we do tonight actually, and I wanted to be sure the public is clear on this, this act tonight does not, we don't do anything to change any flood designation in the city, but it allows it to be updated as it has already been decided by FEMA. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So one more step in a very long process that seems like it's been going on forever, but anyway, we're getting there. This is a public hearing. Would like to open this item for any comments from the public. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look to council for either discussion or direction on action.
I move council bill 2008-05 for first reading and set second reading, Prop. 26. Is that right?
I think it's right. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second and if city clerk and city attorney are happy with all our language, we'll leave it as such. And any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No? And that's carried unanimously. So we'll keep moving this process along and see if we can get close to the final, final on this. We have, I know, individuals here for several items. The problem is if we start giving any priority, probably infringe on someone else. So I am gonna try and keep moving along as efficiently as possible and we'll get to the items as listed in order. The next item we have, the consent calendar that's intended to be acted as a whole unless there's questions or any items to be pulled by the council.
I move it.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. If I could give just Fire Chief Bender maybe a brief opportunity, some interesting things with your activities on your report and might want to share just a word or two on some of the activities that your fire colleagues have been involved, I guess, all over the state, huh?
No. Largely probably your comments are mutual aid commitments out of county. We did get our brush engine and strike team back this weekend. We were anticipating potentially one more crew rotation. However, in the middle, actually crews were en route northbound. OES decided that they would go ahead and release the final strike teams from our region. So we do have all our resources back in the region at this time with exception of some individuals that are part of management teams managing what I understand today is about three dozen of the originally 1,800-plus fires that many of them burned into large complexes. So Battalion Chief Roddy just returned home, strike team's in the audience here tonight. Towne Chief Rice had a separate strike team. They all saw a lot of the unique fire behavior that I think you all probably heard about on the news with the extreme dry conditions related to the drought conditions and the heat and the wind pretty early. And it hasn't hit Southern California yet. We did have a response this afternoon to the end of Prado, but the incident was contained within an acre by the initial response unit, so.
Our turn's next, unfortunately.
Our turn's next.
I think most of us acquainted with Paradise Chico and Santa Barbara. Where's the Ponderosa basin, the Oliver complex fire roughly? Just out of curiosity. The way toward the north. Well, anyway, we're glad everybody pretty much is back in town, so appreciate good work.
That was, the Oliver complex, that was Marin area? Is that area?
Guys have been doing a lot of traveling, but anyway, thank you. Appreciate that update. We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No? No opposition. Consent calendar is approved. The next item on our agenda is listed as old business and it has to do with an appeal with a conditional use permit from Loma Linda University in regards to a parking lot. We have, I think, probably four of us on the council that will potentially have some conflicts since this is a new council as convened. My understanding from the city attorney, even though we've had some action on this before, we will have to potentially draw straws or whatever mechanism the city attorney identifies to cede a quorum for this item. To kick off the possible conflict, since it's a new session, state it in more detail and then refer to it back the rest of the time. I have potential conflict with appointment with the university and then as a physician, patient income derived as a result potentially of that appointment, so I will declare a conflict.
I declare conflict with my, Loma Linda University, my primary employer.
I'm likewise conflicted by employment.
And I'm conflicted by my wife. Not literally, but she works for Loma Linda University. Thanks.
Based on this, I will turn this item for resolution over to the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, in the past, we've used my famous straws, which are prepared with two this evening that say "vote." And so we will draw those straws randomly and the two who pick the straws that say "vote" will participate in the hearing on this matter from this point forward.
Never understood why, you know, flipping coins, drawing straws, okay, but you can't roll dice or anything like that. That's somehow not okay.
Actually, it is okay. I'm trying to listen. But... Yeah. We're done? Yes. I may as well quit now. Two over just mayor. Listen.
I was looking forward to what would be interesting if both the mayor and mayor pro Tim weren't here, then we'd have to decide who's gonna conduct that part, but I guess we won't. Anyway, back to the item. This is number 11 on the agenda. As I mentioned, it's an appeal related to a CUP for a parking lot, et cetera, and it's located on the northwest corner of Benton and Shepherdson. And I think most of us in the community have been aware of what's been going on there and located there recently. Initially, would like to ask Community Development for report. Ms. Waldruff?
This is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny conditional use permit number 0603. The council may recall that on June 12, 2007, the council approved a temporary parking lot for the site and requested that the applicant take traffic count sometime during the temporary use period. The item was continued to October 23, 2007. And during that meeting, the council decided to continue the item to July 2008 to allow additional time to collect data for the possible future plans for the site. The, in a nutshell, staff and the applicant or appellant are asking that the council consider the alternative that the applicant has submitted. And we are asking that you give direction to staff and the applicant on how to proceed. The proposal is to allow the lower portion of the parking lot that fronts on Shepherdson to remain approximately 250 parking stall, parking lot. And it would be improved and made permanent. The northern portion of that site that extends up to the end of that dead-end road, Benton, and to up against the railroad tracks directly behind the temporary parking lot would be used for a future athletic facility and in the interim could be used for overflow parking for special events. The westerly portion that is behind the childcare center would be developed into soccer fields as originally planned. The staff would like to pursue this with direction from the council to take it back through the Planning Commission. This is something of a change. We would need to look at the environmental documents that were done prior to this and reevaluate the new proposal and then bring it back to the council as needed. Our recommendation is that the city council direct staff to pursue the alternative proposal for, and it says a temporary parking lot, but essentially it is for a permanent parking lot, a temporary special event overflow parking lot, a future athletic facility, and the soccer fields to the west. And that those be sent back to the Planning Commission for review and input. The applicant is here. I believe that Verlin Strauss is prepared to speak to this topic. He has a PowerPoint presentation if the council so desires.
Any initial questions of Ms. Waldruff? Otherwise, I will let the applicant present their report. And I have slips from, as already mentioned, Verlin Strauss and also the architect, Ken Schofield. And whatever preference the applicant would like in presentation, the time is yours other than, as I always encourage everyone, we'll keep it as brief as we can, but please present the information that you have for us.
I'll try to be brief. Councilman, thank you for allowing, I guess I need to state my name, Verlin Strauss from Loma Linda University. Thank you for allowing us to come here again and bring back to you the proposed project. It's been just over a year, as Ms. Woodruff had mentioned to us, since we were here last appealing the Planning Commission's decision to deny the project. During that meeting, we did spend a considerable amount of time discussing the merits of the parking area, the traffic in the area, the effect on the neighbors, and the mitigation issues and so forth. As I think was mentioned, the final decision was to allow the university install 565 temporary parking spaces, gravel essentially, and to study the traffic impacts over the next year. We have done this and the data that we have shows approximately 68 cars using the 565 spaces on an average on a daily basis. We had a peak on one day of 223. We are count, we do count the lots every Wednesday, all our lots on our campus. And so this lot, that's where this data is taken from. The first week of our fall quarter, we did count that every day just to see what the ratio or the amount of cars in that lot. And during that week, we did not exceed any more than, you know, just under 100 during that week parking area. And then it slowly declined to where we're around an average of 68 on a daily basis. Of that 68, approximately anywhere from 20 to 40 of them are actually the VA using the lot to park in. We have worked with the VA on this lot and so they are using it for their parking as well. Also in April, we made some changes on our campus and converted some of our all-day parking to two-hour parking. It affected our Drayson Center and the ability for members to park there. And so we changed the lots there to two-hour parking. And this forced several others to go down to the Shepherdson lot. But again, we did not see a large increase. We did for a few days, but then that number came back down. So we don't feel that the traffic impact in the area is extremely significant. During the past year, the university also went through a master planning process. We identified areas of the campus and what we wanted to do with those over the next 15 to 20 years. And we are prepared to share that with the city council and the Planning Commission so they can get an overview of just where the university is planning ongoing or would like to see ourselves grow in the future. So we'd like to work out a time where we can do that with you. We also looked at the parking needs of the overall campus when we did that. And tomorrow evening, we are actually holding the first town hall meeting to discuss and bring to the community a proposed parking structure on the west side of our campus just adjacent to the existing parking structure. So we are starting that process on a facility that we think will help eliminate some of our parking needs. As we looked at the Shepherdson and Benton parking area specifically during our master planning, we did conclude that we should save the northerly portion of that lot for future growth. If you had an athletic field, maybe a running track, or a multipurpose type building, that could serve not only the campus but also the whole city. So we come tonight with a modified project as was described before. We feel this modified plan will better suit both the university as well as the neighborhood. We, it'll allow us to expand our growing needs for parking, allow us to have some temporary overflow parking for those special events. And it's also, we feel that, and you can see it here on the map, and a little bit, you see the site on the screen. And on your map, and just, you can see it here, this is the proposed athletic field. This is where it's always been and all, every time we submitted the project. And we also have then on this section, the parking along Shepherdson Street. We would want to do, you know, all the improvements in that area to create the approximately 250 spaces and then leave the northern half as the current temporary traffic, or temporary parking. And I believe, is this the right? I'm gonna, that was the old, this is the new, and I'm gonna, I think we had some pictures of, this is the restroom facility that would be on the soccer field. Still want to move forward with that. This is the exterior matching the existing facility that is at the Drayson Center along Shepherdson Street. There's a facility there and it would look very similar to that to keep the, look the same across the campus. This is a proposed shuttle stop that would be in the parking facility. And then we took some pictures of the existing site. On the left is what it used to look like. It would get covered with grass during the rainy season and then dry up in the dry season, the summer. And now on the right-hand side, you can get some feel of what it looks like currently. We did grade it to grade and put the appropriate amount of dirt levels everywhere in case we were to get approval in the future for parking when we did the temporary parking. And I'm gonna go one more and see, you can see just, this is looking from, I believe it's Heritage Park, and looking to the northwest of the children's center in the far background and then the parking there. And just some of the sites on there. So we realize the recommendation of the city staff is to allow the project to be considered by the staff and take back to Planning Commission. The project as described, though, we feel is ready to go. We do need, do not really need more time to study it other than to look at the possible changes in the mitigation or that would take place by lowering the number of parking spaces that would be in there permanently. With the reduction in scope, we agree, like I said, that some of the mitigation might change, but we feel that we do need to get a decision tonight so that we can move it forward and continue. We don't want to spend a whole lot more money if we're not gonna be able to push this forward. So we would really like to see a decision tonight on, you know, pushing it forward or not. Going back to the Planning Commission, I'm not sure, they've denied it once, and to take a project back even though it's modified, I'm not sure if that's the direction we should go or not, but we'll leave that up to you to help us decide. So I think that's, at this point, all I'd like to say, and I'll take questions, I guess, if there are questions.
A couple, a comment, a question. The first thing, I'm surprised you could count 60 cars out there. When I drive by there, most of the time now, there's only five or six.
Yeah.
There's really, it's almost empty a whole lot of the time.
Yeah.
Secondly, I wasn't involved in the first discussion. I was sitting in the back room doing something else. It would just seem to me, looking at this, if I was the university and I owned that land, that I'd put the parking near the railroad track where there's a lot of noise and if I was ever gonna put a building, it'd be, I'd change those two around simply because of the proximity to the railroad track.
I think, I think the only reason, well, one of the reasons why we took this approach is because the soccer field currently will connect through to the Drayson Center superfield that's already there. And so the thought is that this probably would either be, not necessarily a building, but it could be, the multipurpose building I mentioned, but then it would have some connectivity to the whole campus as far as the exercise and what recreation and wellness is considered. And I think the other piece of that would be if then the parking would be available for special events, if it was behind the building, it's just a little less convenient to get to, not as obvious where it's at. And then the shuttle, we are really trying to put shuttles on campus behind the building, wouldn't work as well. But for the noise and so forth, it would be agreed, but I don't think anything would be there other than a multipurpose building where hopefully that wouldn't be as disturbing as a residence or something like that.
And one other comment is, I drive on that street a lot to go back and forth home and over the VA and so on. And it seems to me, whether it goes to Planning Commission, we make a decision under whatever we do, that the parking between Prospect and Barton on the west side of Benton has to be taken out. I drive down that street often at rush hour all times of the day and the fact that there are cars parked on the west side of that street is a major, major block to clearing that street. It's a major problem. It's got to be taken out.
Just want to second Councilman Peterson's comment and would like staff to work with. Traffic committee, I think there's some very small improvements of some no parking areas that will improve traffic flow irrespective of this project. Totally agree. Councilman.
One of the questions, I know it came up before, and by the way, I think, I think, you know, obviously it's way improved because it's kind of working in that direction of concern for that neighborhood there.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. One of the questions that came up before was the issue of the neighborhood. And, oh, 40 years ago, I think our family actually rented an apartment there when we first moved to town. I know that area is very congested. I know the people who live there. I've talked to a few of them. In fact, my wife and I first got married, we lived in that, in that same neighborhood. Parking is very tight in there. And that's, that is a major problem. I don't know what the city can do. I think it's great to study it. My concern is by legislative fiat taking parking away from people who depend on that parking is tough because they don't have a lot to start with. So whatever's done has really got to be looked at with great care because those people don't have a lot of options.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, there's, I've learned something in 18 years of council, there is nothing, nothing that this council can do that isn't gonna inconvenience somebody. It's just gonna happen.
True, but, all true, but somebody's gotta speak for the people who live on that street. We all, we all have to speak for them in some way, but I think we have to be very cautious about saying, "We hereby declare that your parking is gone."
There's probably only about six places there.
I understand, but, you know, short of the city creating a small parking lot for them or something, I don't know what you can do because that neighborhood's pretty packed. And that was built pre-incorporation. That was built in the early 1960s. It's been that way ever since.
Yeah, your point's a good one, my response to that, there's real impact. Sorry, we're getting slightly sidetracked. We'll get right back to you. But, you know, there's an impact, I'd rather have traffic move along rapidly than being congested in front of my place. So, you know, there's the pros and the cons both ways. I agree.
Well, we can always, we can always give those, I don't, I think that's a neighborhood that has the designated reserved parking for the residents because I think what happens is people park, I don't think on either side there that has those little stickers that, and I think probably what happens is there's spillover from nearby institutions that park on that street. that park on that street. So, if we start taking away those people's parking, in fact, the people who are parking there in the daytime may not, I don't know, they may not be the residents, they may be people from the VA.
We'll have to look at that.
We're gonna have to look at that, that's a different issue, but...
Any further questions for Mr. Strauss at the moment?
Well, just one, just one question that, that came up recently, Mr. Mayor. During some community discussions, and I was not in one of the forums, but there was a forum that was held over at Linda Villa. And one or two of the residents raised the concern that in their neighborhood, there is, is nothing in the way of a, of a, a green area in, in that area. In fact, they were wishing that there could be something on that corner. I think the last thing the city probably wants is another pocket part. But, I'm trying to think of a way that when, when something's designed, it could at least create some little area, because now what the institution's done over here across the street is create that, you know, the garden that runs into the, into the east campus.
Very nice.
That's nice. If, if there was some way of mitigating a little bit of the effect of this, kind of, it's been cut down some, but maybe doing something right on the corner there where, doesn't have to be very big, but would make it look a little more green. I know those people wish they had a place to, to feel, from what I've heard, I'll just leave it there, is nicer.
A lot of those people walk on that street.
Well, that's just it, they, they walk, that's their walking area.
And if I remember correctly, and I was trying to look back to the, the actual conditions of approval previously, that there, you know, it talks about, you know, providing pedestrian-friendly street scene by incorporating street trees and minimum of four-foot-high shrubs to screen the parking lot. The setbacks, I think, were more than twelve feet along there, and so, and I think in here's, in the previous picture where the berm was, I think that berm is a setback area. So, all of that would be either sidewalk, shrubs and/or grass, so that you then could pedestrian all the way from there to the, in front of the campus.
Some tables or something, or seats.
Your board reflects that too, sir.
Yeah.
The board.
There could be maybe some places where people could stroll and sit and that sort of thing.
Yeah. Sitting, we haven't looked at, but it's definitely something we could.
Could think about.
Definitely.
That would be a big help.
I think that would help a lot.
That'd be a great help if you guys could, you know, stretch another five feet out of it or something. I don't know what does make it really pedestrian-friendly, but that would, that would be a great help.
I, I can't remember exactly in front of the children's center if they actually have a sidewalk there, but I know in front of the Drayson track, we don't, and part of this would be to put the sidewalk in through there. It's wide enough to do it.
Yes.
It just never was. But I'm not sure about the children's center if there's a sidewalk there or not, but the, the goal would be to, if people wanted to walk from that parking lot to campus, they could, without having to get on the street.
I think, I think if you did that, that would be a big removal of the main concern I've heard.
Having personally been involved in some of those forums that facility mentioned in the not-too-distant past, I do agree with that concern, and I, I'll admit, I'm kind of bothered by this temporary versus permanent, how long is temporary, and so forth. Here we've gone for a year. To me, what we have currently is, is frankly, an eyesore. We got bare dirt, we have no landscaping, cars are very visible. Again, personal opinion, I like the idea of more sidewalk and landscaped area, get the berms landscaped, so those folks from the villa don't have to look at the cars, they can look at some nice landscaping, and I think those are important concepts, and I appreciate the addressing of some of those concerns, and I think they are very important. Any other comments, or would you like to have your architect brief us on some of the issues, and then if we have questions for either of you, we could return to that? Would that be satisfactory?
We certainly can. I'm not sure if he has additional comments, but he's welcome to come up if you have questions for him, but...
Any questions for architect at this point? Would you care to comment on some of the landscaping since that's come up and how that might be addressed with some of the visual concerns from the villa and others, and pedestrian access with sidewalks, et cetera?
Right, Doug. My name's Ken Schofield, from Redlands, California. As you can see, we're maintaining the, the landscape palette that was initially proposed with the CUP, and, except for the area that's not going to be improved, but any, everything else that shows the landscaping will be along the lines of the previously proposed landscape palette, which has a, a mixture of trees with color and, and flowers and things like that, which, again, enhancing your pedestrian experience as you walk around the edge. And as you can see from the plan, that it is a fairly deep landscape surround to the parking lot, and there is a sidewalk included in that space, so it's not just, just planting or just sidewalk, it's a combination. Again, I think that would provide a nice walking area. And as, the reason we didn't extend that any further is because in deference to the future development, we'd like to have that also contribute to the landscaping on, as we go down Benton further to the north, and we're not sure what that is yet, but you mentioned maybe some little seating areas or something. That could be developed with a building as that design gets further, further along. I don't know if there's any other questions. The, the small building, again, is, is fairly straightforward. It provides toilets and some, I believe, some vending machines and things like that.
So, in regards to the villa, which would be, you know, just to the east of, correct, their visual impact, once some of the trees and landscaping grows up, would certainly be softened quite a bit. How, how much would you estimate you'd see of the actual parking lot from ground level over there once the landscaping's matured a little bit?
Well, I think you can see from this, that the larger circles that you can see probably from your distance are actually trees, so those are going to mature and, and put some height and some definite screening to the, to the parking. So, I think that in the long, in the long term, maybe five to ten years, as those trees really grow up, it will be, again, quite a visual barrier to the cars sitting in the lot. So, you won't probably see much of the cars at all. And then with some lower shrubs down below as you walk along, that obviously is a, you get the lower plants with some of the color that we show up here to provide the pedestrian on sites a better experience.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, where on this picture, this diagram that I have here, where is the shuttle stop gonna be?
The shuttle stop is located here.
Oh, way down there. Oh, oh, it's inside, internal.
So, it's, yeah, it's internal. It's, again, adjacent to the handicap parking. We try to keep those things closely related so people with disabilities can move to the bus easily. That, the design of that feature hasn't been finalized, but we would have some kind of a shelter and, and a pickup drop-off zone, which would also work for the soccer, the soccer field. You basically access the soccer field from here, and then eventually from the Drayson Field side, so there is a, a connection from both hands.
I mean, isn't, isn't there any possibility of, say, on Shepherdson Drive, and maybe even just around the corner on Benton, around the corner there or someplace, to have a few, a couple benches maybe for the older people as they walk along to sit and...
Well, as far as space, I think that's possible. We discussed that. As, as far as the space available, it would be something to be able to put a bench and possibly a little, a, a little area. You can see there is some depth on the Shepherdson side, so, I mean, I'm sorry, on the, you know, the Shepherdson side, and then Benton isn't quite as deep, but there is enough room, I think, to maybe put a bench or so along in there. And we could develop that, that further.
I guess just getting onto my wish list too, and it's probably unfair, but it's worth thinking about with this project. You know, you go to places like Vancouver, British Columbia, or UC Davis, and the one thing that's made cycling practical for a lot of folks is their parks and some major transportation corridors, having those separate little bike lanes that don't interact with the traffic. And again, this particular project, maybe not the place to start, but I sure love to see as we go forward, you know, a small area of dedicated bike lanes ideally that would go, you know, across town.
Shepherdson has it.
Not what you would consider a geographically separated from traffic.
No, it's true, yeah.
Correct. I think it's striped for bicycles right now.
It's been striped, yeah.
Right. Any other questions, comments for the applicants? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
This is not technically a public hearing, so unless there's any overwhelmingly pressing comments, the public, I will turn to the council for discussion and direction.
How do we accomplish removing those few parking spaces on the west side of Benton, right up there near Barton? How, how is that to be accomplished? Because frankly, I, I will not vote for this project until we can, until I can be sure that those parking spaces are gonna be removed. It has to go together. The jam up there is, there can be one car parked there, and there can be thirty cars waiting to turn west on Barton Road simply because there is one single car parked there and you can't get out.
I think even two, as I've looked at that, looked the same thing, I think eliminating two parking places on there would solve most of it, maybe not all of it, but it, I, I'll agree with you, and I'll look to city attorney and planning and maybe ask, could we, could we, I guess, tie something like that to our recommendation if we move forward?
Sure, it can be part of the mitigation.
Okay, but, okay, let me be the minority view on this. If, if we could do this in such a way that we talk to the people in that neighborhood and, and protect them so they can still live there, because they were there first. And it may be that, I know a year ago, you talked, or I think you, you talked about earlier, was the VA was gonna get potentially some parking over in this area. In fact, you've already said, most of them are, a good chunk of them. So, I, I don't know how many people who are parking, because I know we had this very debate a year ago about that street. And if there's a way that you could put those permits, so the people who get to park there are the ones that live there, and it turns out that that's adequate, and then the folks at the VA get to park over in the new lot, maybe you've accomplished it all and you haven't hurt anybody.
My only response, and I, I agree with Councilman Peterson, there is just no way you can have adequate traffic flow on Benton without removing a couple of those parking places. It's just self-evident.
Does that go out every day?
I, I do almost every day too. I, you know, what we can do to mitigate, again, I would feel as a resident, I would prefer not to have cars stacked up in my front yard if I lived there, I'd rather see them move and get out of there, and give up potentially an extra parking place, but I'm sure there can be some ways we can figure to help accommodate that and look to staff if we choose to go forward with that as part of the mitigation.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that what we're looking for tonight is direction from the city council, and I think that the project is, is actually a bit removed from that, that issue, although it would affect it, that staff can take a separate track and look into that while it's, while the project is being processed. And it would naturally go to Public Works and Fire Department because they are staffing the Traffic Advisory Committee. And we can probably have maybe a public forum of some kind for the neighbors and, and, or find out who the people are that, that live there, and whether or not we can accommodate some kind of parking permit. Is that agreeable to Fire Department and Public Works?
Public Works has staffed the Traffic Committee, and they have looked at this issue previously, and we'd be happy to relook at it and come up with some recommendations. We happen to agree with the councilman and mayor that this is a difficult issue, is protecting the people that have the rights to park on the street, as well as the need of the citizens to have the flow through there. It's a difficult issue, but we'd be happy to look at it again.
May I ask, Ms. Wolter, we've heard from the applicant tonight, the concern about being able to move forward. I shudder as being part of a government entity for many years, how slowly we do tend to move things along. What would be the practicality if we ask for this item to be on the next Planning Commission agenda, of getting it back to us at our next regularly scheduled council meeting? Is that feasible? I would, I'm sensitive to having Planning Commission look at this, but I'm also sensitive of bogging down, which we tend to be very good at in government.
You know, I would like to get it back to the council as quickly as possible as well. The constraints are that we have to revisit the environmental. We know that the parking reduction by fifty percent is significant, but we need to understand how much that's going to reduce impacts at the Prospect and Benton and the Barton and Benton Road intersections. And, but we can move, we will move as quickly as we can. If environmental is less than, we should be able to, to bring it back more quickly. But we, we do need to investigate some environmental issues first, and then get it back to Planning Commission and Council.
So, in practicality, you know, we need to consider those things before further action is taken, even, even so, in your opinion?
Yes, and, and I think the city attorney has some things he wants to add to that.
Well, it is correct that we do have to make the, the sequoet determination before you can take an action approving the project. This, this came as an appeal of a denial in effect, so there was not an environmental determination made at the Planning Commission previously, or recommended. So, that's why we have to take a step back to complete the sequoet.
There was a proposed mitigated negative dec, and declaration, and what we'll need to do is look at that negative declaration and see what the alternative does, and it, it probably does reduce even some of the mitigations, which might make the applicant happy. But we'll need to evaluate that and then get it to Planning Commission.
So, if I, if I might ask city attorney and staff, if it was the desire by the council to potentially see this project move forward pending the items that you mentioned, what action tonight would you ask us to take, and what specific order would be best?
I believe that we are asking for the project to be referred back to Planning Commission in light of the proposed alternative.
Do you want any specific language on the appeal as part of the action?
Well, it's kind of an unusual situation because the, the applicant has changed the proposal significantly, which renders the appeal somewhat moot. I think they're asking that the amended project be approved. Because it has come before you as part of the appeal, you could keep it in front of you for your next meeting with the environmental to come forward at that time. A more limited project would be within the scope of what the Planning Commission previously reviewed, so it's not really something new, it's something less in effect than what they had considered, and they voted two to two, as you recall, and that's why it failed. So, you could keep it with the council at your next meeting if staff, if that would give staff time to go through the amendments and review the environmental document, or you could refer back to the Planning Commission for them to take action as they see fit. They could approve it at their next meeting if they find three votes in favor at that point based upon the amended project, and then it would not have to come back to the council.
Now, we don't have a formal submittal of the alternative, we just have a, a bare-bones alternative, so we, we also need to work with the applicant to get the formal submittal. So, I, I think Mr. Holdaway has the, the right, he's going in the right direction, but maybe we, we need a little bit more time to, to get the application, or not the application, but the materials submitted for this.
So, my understanding is that if it goes to the Planning Commission and they pass it, it does not even come back to council again?
Doesn't have to.
Correct. If the council chose to move in that direction, then we would not formally act on the appeal tonight, is that correct, or what would be your advice?
Good table.
Well...
Well, your action would be to, well, you're not technically granting the appeal because I think you could simply make a finding that the project as previously proposed is, in effect, being withdrawn and amended. And you could, based upon that, resubmit it to, ask that it be sent to the Planning Commission for their further review and action as they see fit.
Mr. Zepf, break in on Mr. Brayer.
There's one technical thing. We want to be sure that we let the temporary parking that is there now continue while this is working out. I wasn't certain how best to do that. During all the debate, we tried to make sure there was at least places for people to park, even though it is ugly and all that. So can we take something, if we refer it back, that says that while this is being resolved, the temporary parking can just continue as it is?
I think that could certainly be part of the direction from the council.
But it doesn't create problems because you're about to have a new school year starting. Okay.
Mr. Brayer?
Ken Brayer, Homeland University. We presented an appeal to city council because of the denial by the Planning Commission. And when we came to the city council, we were given some feedback based on some of the issues you've talked about tonight, including the parking and the traffic concerns. We'd like to stay with one body, and our proposal specifically responds to what we heard in that appeal last October. To go back to Planning Commission starts this whole cycle over again, and we haven't responded to the appeal.
That's a fair point.
The concern I have from staff, heard some issues related to SEQA and other issues, and I fully respect that concern, but I'm hearing the attentions on the other side. Can you help enlighten us on some of those concerns?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any problem if the council wishes to keep the matter before you. As I said, I think what was considered by the Planning Commission previously was a subset, or a greater project than the current proposal, so there wouldn't be anything new for them to consider other than the reduction of the parking lot area and possibly a reduction in some of the mitigation or fine tuning of mitigation. So you could certainly keep that in front of the city council for action, but you do have the discretion to refer it back to the Planning Commission if you so desire.
We could keep it in front of the city council, and I presume we also could ask to have at least a brief review with comments from the Planning Commission with some of the architectural details, not for formal approval of the project, but could we ask them just to advise us on any landscape or other little details and bring that back to us? Because I do respect their expertise, and I think have more expertise on that than we have, and still keep it in front of this body to satisfy the concerns. Would those things mesh appropriately?
That's something pretty simple that we could probably do at the next Planning Commission meeting, just get their input on the new layout and landscaping, while we look at the other issues that relate to the lessening of intensity of the project and impacts related to traffic and the residential neighborhood. We could do that at the council level.
So we wouldn't formally be asking them to take an action, but just provide input on a review of the plan, et cetera?
Yes.
Now, my understanding is that the university was hoping to get a final decision tonight. Is that correct?
Well, I think just to the appeal, yes, we'd like a final decision. However, we understand that because we're reducing, or trying to address the issues of reducing the scope a little, it does change some of the mitigation that may have to take place, and that does need to be determined what that is. But yeah, we would like to know, is this project going to go forward, or are we going to go back to drawing board and do something completely different? But we do like the idea of it staying, as Mr. Brayer indicated, in front of one body so we don't have to restart the process over again, if possible.
I think there's wisdom in, if we can leave it here, because in a sense, what happened is from the Planning Commission, they were divided. And when it came here, we raised the concerns that some of us had picked up on. They've tried to address those. If the Planning Commission could give just that input on those areas that we really need, and we go ahead and make the decision, because I think we were all kind of moving on a consensus with the applicant toward a solution. It seems like it would cut off a few months. I think we're, I think we're, it seems like we're in sync, pretty much, on what we want to do.
I would concur, and in fact, with the help and crafting of our city attorney, I'm ready for a formal action to be put on the table.
Well, this is going to be a funny sounding statement, but I'm happy to make the motion, and I'll tell you what I don't want, from my point of view, what I don't want the motion to include, and that is a denial of the appeal. If that helps. You know, I would like, I move that we seek advice from the Planning Commission, and that we instruct the staff to go ahead and the applicant to finish the paperwork in terms of the SEQA issued document and so on, so that the final product, as presented tonight, with some of the landscaping suggestions, and looking into the parking issue, which to me is going to be very important, be brought back to council with a final resolution so that we have the final product to vote on.
And that pending that, I'd make the second, throw in a couple of words on the second, that the current status of the parking as it is today continue while this is being done. We could say another six months to allow, until this result, but just say December 31. I think you should be specific.
I think staff has a suggestion as to timing of what needs to be done.
I think that we can work with the applicant to take a presentation to the Planning Commission for their next meeting, which is August 20th, and get their input and bring it back to the council, probably either in late September or early October at the latest.
I would.
And if we have to go out for any environmental review, I believe that should give us time to revise the draft documents that we had ready for the original project.
I fully recognize we may not meet all the deadlines, but I would personally like to ask that it be placed on a September agenda. If we don't meet that, we'll deal with it, but would like that if we may. Is that direction acceptable to the applicants or any other final comments?
It sounds fine to us.
I've been accused, Floyd, of wordy motions before, but you might have even beat me tonight. That was a tough one, though. Any further discussion on, we have a motion in a second, and I think hopefully crafted what we need to do here. It is a little complex with the different factors to consider, but basically to keep this in front of us, get Planning Commission input on the plans, and then work through the SEQA and other requirements, get it back on our agenda while we continue the temporary parking, and revisit this in September. Any other comments from the council as seated? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? I guess none. We will ask our remaining two council members to return. Thank you, and we'll keep working on this project and try not to let government get us bogged down too much. But a lot of those details that bog us down, unfortunately, none of us directly have control over on this dais. It's brought to us from the state and many other areas. So, anyway, thank you for your patience on that. The next item, get to new business, and related to a little bit of vein of our last subject, permit parking and so forth, and I'd like to ask Fire Department, is this Vision Chief Crawford again on this item, it looks like?
Yes, this actually is indirectly related to what you've just been discussing. And we do have a graphic that we placed up on the screen here that we will refer to as we go through this. There is a staff report and a proposed resolution in your agenda packet. This proposed revision is based upon numerous complaints that have been received in regard to the permit parking. As you're aware, the permit parking zones have been established by ordinance 348, and we do revise it from time to time by form of a resolution. The last revision was January 11, 2005. What we're proposing here tonight is identified in the resolution, and those changes are identified with underlines, because this gets a little bit tedious as you go through it. But what I can point out to you, and if you can kind of see the visual here. Okay, we're actually adding right up here Alameda Street between Evans and Campus. And then we're increasing Evans, which is this right here. It has been a permit parking zone between University and Stewart. This is proposing to go ahead and extend it from Stewart all the way to Alameda. San Juan Street, which is here, there is an increase which would incorporate this portion right there. Currently, this is covered, but it would increase there. It's also to include San Mateo here. As we come across here, there have been some revisions in this area on Prospect. This is a little bit hard to see. This designation right there is two hours, and there has been an area right here at the end which has been used for residential purposes. It would continue that adjacent to what traditionally was known as the White House. There is some revision in the language for Prospect between Reggie Circle and Anderson Street to make it a little more specific, but no principal changes. This portion of Star Street remains as is. These portions down here remain as they are. But we do have some changes over here, specifically adding Poplar Street between Shepherdson and Prospect, Bel Air between Shepherdson and Prospect, the south side of Shepherdson, which is across the street from the proposed parking lot. Currently, the north side is prohibited parking all the way along. You will notice that there is considerable amount of vehicles that are parked along here. We do have complaints from the residents of the apartments there, so the proposal is to add there. The areas here remain as they have been. This area is part of the discussion that you just had, that is proposed to remain as a permit parking zone. This portion from Prospect to Shepherdson was removed back in 2005. That used to be a permit parking zone right there, but based upon analysis that it was underutilized, it was recommended that that be just opened up for general parking. What we're finding now, though, is this area here is full of cars. These residents don't have any off-street parking, other than the little garages at the rear. The same is true here for Lamar and Taylor. So this along here, there is no proposal to change that and no proposal to change this section right there. So those are the changes that are before you. Be glad to address any questions that you might have. Again, the permit parking zone is designed for the residents of the properties that are right there adjacent to this street and their designated guests. And so we do have a process that's well-established where the residents can come in and obtain those permits. It is something that they have to renew on an annual basis.
And if I may just comment again, not only has our staff worked on this, this has also been, to reemphasize with meetings of the Traffic Advisory Committee, input of all the different residents and so forth, so this is certainly a multi-pronged input and multifaceted approach.
We do have a copy here of the approved Traffic Advisory Committee minutes from March 6, 2008, which does have the action of the committee making these recommendations.
And again, we would just be amending an ordinance, so we're not changing any ordinance.
Not changing an ordinance, it's just actually producing a new resolution that supports the ordinance, but it's essentially just amending the existing ordinance.
Question from council?
Question. On the parking issue in general, on the parking issue in general, does, maybe this is a question for the attorney, do, does any private person, whether their property fronts on the street or not, do they have a right to the parking? Or is that a privilege? Is it something that if the city wanted to take it away, they can just take it away? Does it have to go through a public hearing? Is, what's the law on that?
Well, the streets are within the jurisdiction of the city. The city has committees set up and procedures to regulate the use of the streets, and so this is the product of that police power that the city has a right to exercise.
So, on Benton Street, that one block section there, which I think we need to do something with?
I think you're referring to this block right here.
Yes. If the city wanted to remove, just remove all parking from that side of the street, we could do it.
Yes.
Or you could theoretically prohibit parking on this side and do permit parking on the other side. That's a little more problematic because the VA hospital property is on that side. But when you look at the intent of the ordinance and the intent of the regulation, it is to provide some off-site parking for the residents. If you prohibit here, the only other convenient option is across the street, unless they're going to come down here.
I really like city manager's suggestion. I think if we did something like restricted on-street parking in that section we just talked about between, I was throwing out numbers, noon and 6:00 p.m., we'd certainly streamline that traffic flow and, you know, we wouldn't need it on weekends. I'm talking about weekdays, so if staff can bring us back something on that, that'd be great. Anyway, back to this particular item, are we ready for a motion? I'm ready for a motion on council bill R-2008-43, amending our.
Okay, second.
I hear, first or second, we'll let Pam decide. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. It's carried unanimously. All right, item 13, allocation of development, impact fees for temporary fire station on Redlands Boulevard, and would like Fire Chief to present this item for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In staff report, you have before you, recommendation from Fire Administration to move forward with, in a temporary fashion, fire station on the north side of the city to help us mitigate the challenges of response times and help us out with our planning for large incident and disasters. I do have a relatively short presentation that I can present, and if it meets your approval, okay. Station two issue, biggest issue we have is really the response times as lined out in general plan and Fire Department requirements is to meet five minutes eighty percent of the time to our emergency responses. An additional requirement would be disaster planning and tactical placement of emergency assets to the city. The ISO rating calls for a 1.5 mile travel distance. That's generally what's found in communities our size that would meet that five minute That's generally what's found in communities our size that would meet that five-minute response time. In a large metropolitan area, obviously, that reduces to mere blocks. A community our size, you generally find about that standard, and that's what we're finding with our data as well. And that is also paralleled by requirements by the Council on Fire Service Accreditation and NFP, so that's a fairly standard requirement. Those aren't arbitrary. Those times are developed with rationale. Some of the main rationale behind that would be on the EMS side, brain damage within three to four minutes with, you know, lack of oxygen, a patient not breathing. For cardiac arrest victims, a 10% decrease in probability of saving a patient every minute. On the fire suppression side, flashover or the occurrence of full room ignition happens at five to seven minute mark, and again, fire doubles in size every minute. So those are some of the main factors that drive the response time. There's additional others, but those are some of the biggest. This graph represents our response volume that you've seen just over the last steady increase over the last 15 years, up to '07's data of 30,078 calls out of one single station, making us one of the busier stations in the area. Again, that big concern we have comes in the call load to the north side of the city. This was initially looked at in 2006. I asked our team to pull that data up to a point where in April, I look at that entire period, that was 6,523 calls at the period we looked at. Of those, roughly a third are the 2,089 calls to that north end, and compliance down at a 37% rate rather than the 80% that's driven by our general plan and Fire Department requirements. This is just a rough, kind of overlay of what that response area gets you. The fire demand zones outlined in the staff report would be the north, northeast, north central, those areas outside the perimeter of this, understanding that there may be prongs from this, you know, right along the main artery of Mountain View as it would spider out. But since we measure fire demand zone in general, that's what it does look, similar picture to this overlay right here, areas outside of that being out of compliance. Another big concern of ours is, again, the disaster planning aspect for seismic activity, large incidents along the railroad tracks. We are, as you'll see here, I think, somewhat divided from two sides of town primarily by bridges. You saw the California Street Bridge there that is our main access easterly. The Mountain View Bridge, it's just a main access to the north side. The Anderson Street Bridge is another main access. If you put the railroad tracks and waterways in there, you begin to see, and there we've added the Beaumont and Waterman. It's a very divided scenario that in light of potential seismic activity that would interrupt that transportation infrastructure for a period of time, there's no response to the north side of the city. That's a big concern for us. Additionally to that, all our assets are currently under one roof in one location. Some additional things we think about when we think the effect on the community is, you look at what is outside of that response area or what is on the other side of that access if there was any problem with that infrastructure. Again, you see, it's our elementary school and our academy is on the other side of that. It's our commercial zone. Typically, in strategic planning, your commercial areas are at the core of your response, considering what would happen to the larger community and economic well-being of the whole if there was any impact to any one of those. So typically, your commercials area is at the heart of your response, not at the periphery or outside your response. So from a planning perspective, that is a big concern of ours as well. The solution we would like you to direct us to move forward with tonight, it would be a temporary solution. We've looked at a manufactured home for crew quarters, a pre-engineered metal building for the apparatus bay. We've worked with the city manager and staff to find a city-owned property that would meet this requirement temporarily. There's funding for this in development impact fees, Fire Facilities Fund that calls for those funds to be specifically used for fire facilities, and that balance is currently $714,000. Initially, we would move staff and apparatus from Station One to man that station. Then the permanent scenario for Station Two would come as the growth of the north side and future development and part of a strategic planning process that, you know, looks long-term on the north side of the city. This is the location that we've identified, the corner of Redlands Boulevard and Ohio Street, looking at it from all directions there. These are just representations of what we might see, the manufactured home, also a pre-engineered metal building as an apparatus bay. Also in your packet was the plot plan. You'll see the crew quarters would be in this location, the apparatus bay, the apparatus apron would be with the approach to Ohio Street with the parking to the side of that apron to minimize the costs and need for additional concrete. Largely, our response is going to be to the north, out to the Redlands Boulevard corridor, but this gets you off the main road for safer return to quarters, backing, pulling out, staying off the busiest street, but relatively close access. Also in your package was proposed budget. Jarv and I have worked. Most of this was Jarv's input to give the details of those costs. He did include a 15% contingency, which brought the total to $294,000 to complete this project. So again, our request is that you direct us to move forward with the site improvements and acquiring the modular home and engineered building, adopting this budget to accomplish that, also approve the use of the city land for that use temporarily, and use these funds from the development impact fees, and also to move current personnel from Station One to man, staff that station. That's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
I have a question. How much would this impact our annual expenses from this year forward for operations and staffing and maintenance upkeep?
It would be very minimal. It would probably utilities at that location would, current staffing, most of equipment supplies are bought for that crew out of the current quarters. There would probably be some very minimal increases to, again, utilities at a different location.
So again, just to underscore that, we're not talking about increasing total numbers of personnel, it's shifting resources to another location. And, you know, I guess to follow up on Keltzman, Mayor Pro Tim Rigsby's question, all of us are very concerned with the economic times we're in, and so the ongoing cost is a big one.
Yeah, that's current staffing, that is currently out of one single location, moved to another location. Questions about increases in staffing, you know, those come with longer-range planning and call loads, and certainly there's factors that drive those. This is one that we think we can, at least with the use of our current staffing, mitigate the problems we're having right now.
Would there still be calls answered by both stations for most calls, or would you divide them up? And how would that be divided up? Would Confire handle that, or?
Yes, and just, it's a process that we go through in the CAD. They're divided up. The closest resource handles the call, the closest appropriate resource handles the call. We will move the medic engine leaving the, to that location, leaving the truck company and medic squad at Station One, so we'll have medic resource on both sides of the city. Also, you know, our truck company is not a single-use ladder company. It is what we call a quint, which also has the capacity as a pumping suppression unit. Just, it really acts much like a second engine, so we will retain a suppression unit, you know, first in on the south side of the city as well. You know, some of the calls are going to require units from both sides of the city, a commercial alarm, a traffic collision with extricate, you know, some resources are going to come from both sides of the city, but many of them, you know, some medical aids, some less acute calls, single resources handle, and they wouldn't handle that within their district. If that unit's already busy, as we get right now, we get stacked, you know, it's not unusual for us to be three calls deep, you know, at any given time, any day right now. So, you know, there's times where a resource will be coming from the other side of town as currently happens.
I suspect that actually there will be some minor saving in wear and tear and travel time. Driving from this side of town to that side of town once doesn't seem all that much, but when you do it 1,000 times, it adds up. And so there's, it's going to, there's going to be some saving on equipment as well.
I think that would be fair to say. I don't have it measured out exactly what that would be, so I didn't want to publish that, but I think that would be a fair assumption that, you know, a third plus of our calls are down on that side of the city, and I think there would be some decrease in driving expense.
And not only that, there is some risk involved in driving those rigs all the way from here all the way down there every time there's a call. It's certainly not a big risk, but, you know, I always hark back to the days I spent at Wall Wall College when two fire trucks were called to the same fire and they collided in the middle of the street, which was not a pretty sight.
Since you mentioned risk, I would bring up a factor that's really pushing us to want to expedite this, again, is the improvements to the Mountain View overpass and what appears we may be looking at some simultaneous construction on Anderson Street with tunnel projects that have been discussed. If that happens, I'm looking at my two main arteries to both sides of the city impacted all at one time. Now, we're trying to mitigate the effect to Mountain View, but right now we have a policy with our crews that they will shut down code three response. There's nowhere for traffic to go right now. I mean, those barriers ride in at a minimum. At some point in response, when you cannot see the traffic oncoming, you cannot safely go around people. We're going to cause an accident if we do that, so we're asking our crews to, until they can see that other driver coming the other way, the wide of his eyes, to shut down that code and not cause a greater problem. So to see that impact on Anderson Street as well is making this a little more acute as far as timing and pushing this forward very rapidly. But again, the response time, I mean, that's been there for a while and certainly a situation we need to mitigate as soon as possible.
We were planning on putting a permanent fire station. Do we actually have a location allocated for that at this point?
There was a location identified in the University Park and Holland Partners projects as suggested location and a fire station integrated into that development. I think we should really look at that and are we, it might be the best spot. I would like to really see a good analysis of that. Are we looking at the most convenient spot and one that's paid for or one that's best for us long-term? So there was one identified, whether that still stands with whatever modifications may happen to those projects, I couldn't speak to that right now.
I know that we own some land along Redlands Boulevard over on that side of town. I was just wondering whether we even consider that because, you know, we're spending a fair amount of money for something temporary, and if there's possibly, it makes sense to look at putting the temporary where the permanent's going to be so we don't move again in a few years, but I was wondering whether we consider that at all?
The land, would you be referring to down by the two-story?
Yes.
I think you start to get fairly far east of that location. Certainly something we could map out and look at. However, when you think about putting something temporary on the site you want to go to, are you clogging up the site you want to ultimately build on anyway? And don't you want that area clear for the construction of your future use?
Okay.
Any other questions? I just had a couple of just follow-up questions related, again, to the temporary buildings and so forth. Do we project that those buildings will have a useful life and further reuse if we get the permanent structures built? What would that use be, if anything?
Suggestion, at least to this point, has been to get a modular building that really could be used in our housing programs after we use them, so it could be recycled in that use, so it's not something so fire-specific that no one else would be interested or be in use. So our goal is to try to stay as civilian in nature as possible, yet still meet the needs. And the metal structure, certainly it's an asset that's used by our Public Works, and I, you know, we haven't identified a specific use for it, but in discussions with Jarv, there's a likelihood that that would be something that would be of value elsewhere in the city, yes.
Second quick question. You list out the areas of substandard response time or less-than-desirable response time. The one that I'm not clear on seems like still going to be a little ways away, the northwest Brenmar area. Will this be satisfactory for that area as well? I can see all the other ones look geographically fairly close.
I don't, I don't know that that station necessarily affects that fire demand zone specifically.
But certainly all those other ones, it would appear that you're going to be a lot closer and certainly going to come a lot closer to being in compliance with those, I would presume.
I agree.
Ready for direction by council? If there's no further questions or comments.
You know, I think there's one other item that probably should be mentioned particularly for the public's interest, is that the cost was mentioned at $294,000. However, there is a fund which can be used for this purpose, which currently contains $700 and some odd thousand dollars. What all can the money in that fund be used for? For city manager, is that--
It can only be used for new structures, essentially.
Oh, not rolling equipment?
Only if it's deemed to be a new piece of equipment. It can't be used to replace an existing piece of equipment.
Right. So this is basically what that fund is for.
That's correct.
Number one. And number two, if a permanent, let me put it another way, the establishment of a new permanent fire station could very well be part of a new project and paid for by that project in town, is that correct?
Yes. They could do that in lieu of paying fees.
Right. I, Mr. Mayor, I move the recommendation.
We have an action that's been moved.
Second.
Seconded.
I'll defer your second.
Question by the city.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just, I hate to throw cold water on the project, but we do have to do some of those administrative things. CEQA does apply to this project. It will have to go through some environmental review, plus the site plan will have to go to our Planning Commission as a precise plan of design. We're subject to those same rules as any other applicant. As far as the acquisition, we will have to go through some Public Works bidding because this exceeds $5,000. So there are some steps that we'll have to follow. Your action tonight could be approval of the concept with direction to go forward with the environmental and other steps necessary. the environmental and other steps necessary before final action can be taken.
That's exactly what my motion.
That's what I heard the motion.
I seconded, I seconded that motion.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Yeah, Kerry's, look forward to providing better response times to parts of our town that hasn't been as, as prompt as we would all like to see it. Thank you. All right, item 14. Sorry to keep some of you waiting. I know a number of you have been for this item and always hope to move along faster, but, you know, how elected officials are, always long-winded, so sorry about that. This is our appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards, and we have those listed in our packets and projected on the screen, and unless there's any reason not to, I presume we'll just go down the list as listed. So the first one would be Budget Committee, and we have, it looks like, two members that we need to act on, is that correct?
On, yes.
On the Budget Committee, we have Mrs. Cook and Mr. Galant, who have all, both performed admirably, expressing a willingness to serve another term. I've had a motion ready to, and a second to reappoint them. Any other considerations, or shall we make that unanimous? Oh yeah, it looks unanimous. Great. Historic Commission, we have, it looks like four members need to be appointed. I believe Community Development Director Waldroff had a comment or two on this. Please.
The, the primary recommendation on this issue comes from the City Clerk with input from my department. The Chair of the Committee, though, would like to request that the Council consider appointing as an honorary member the Librarian from the Heritage Room to provide a bit of liaison for the Commission. In the past, we've had Marilyn Crane, when she was in that position, and Merlin Burt, and we now have the historian for the university, Mr. Richard Shaver, and we're very thrilled to have him on the Commission. But we would also like to have an honorarium non-voting member at this point of, I think it's Lori, Lori Curtis, I believe, is the Librarian, and have her appointed just to, to be able to sit in on the meetings, and maybe if there's an opening at some point in the future, she could be permanently appointed.
Is it acceptable to the Council for that honorary membership with that historical resource? Seeing everyone nodding their head.
I'll make a motion to.
We'll make it formal.
Thank you.
We'll second it.
Second, any opposition? Seeing none, unanimous. Now, if we can go back to the four official members, or voting members, might be a better way of phrasing that. We have four individuals that have served, again, admirably, and all wish to continue, as I understand it. What's the pleasure of the Council to continue with those individuals as listed?
Yes, yeah, second.
Any opposition to that? Seeing none, thanks for your service, again, all of you that have worked on that and are working on that. Next, Parks Recreation Beautification. We have two members that we need to appoint. I believe Mr. Penred and Mr. Wiley have expressed interest in continuing.
Move that they be reappointed.
Let's move.
I second it.
Second, any opposition to their continued involvement? Thanks again. The next one is the Personnel Board. Seems like we always kinda decide whether we really need this, or what to do about this, and various things.
When's the last time we met? Long time, hasn't it been a long time?
Yeah, but Mr. Meyer's expressed an interest in continuing, so we should.
Unless there's a reason to dissolve it, even though fortunately haven't needed it to right recently, unless there's any reason to do differently.
You have to have it, I think.
I think, I think that's great, Mr. Meyer's willing to continue, I guess to keep, keep in compliance with the rest. Can I hear a motion and a second?
Some of.
Second.
Move and second, and any opposition to that action? Hearing none, approve.
What, what happened to the other member?
Um.
His terms expiring.
We appoint two, and the two appoint one.
Correct. Mr. O is appointed by the, by the Board itself, and he has expressed an interest to serve.
And they reappoint?
Yes. The Board reappoints.
I guess that's traditionally how we've done that, and continue with that if that's acceptable to the Council. All right, move on to the next item, and that's the Planning Commission. And I believe we have, what, one vacancy, and then two other terms that are up for filling of those terms. So we have a total of three, is that correct? And we do have, I believe, in front of us a number of applications potentially for these I think the two tensions we have tonight, whether everyone has been able to be with us that is interested on this versus trying to fill these positions and let the activities that are needed be fully staffed, since we have meetings coming up shortly and items before them. So, looking to the Council for direction, what direction they would like to do? Would you like to, I know there are a number of individuals that do have applications that I've seen here, would you like to wish them to present? Would you like to go through and discuss some of these applications beforehand? What direction would you like to handle this? Any comments?
We've typically had to make a small presentation, haven't we?
We have, although I think of some occasions we haven't, but I think more often than not, agree.
Suppose we could have presentations by the applicants? Is that, is that what you're saying? It's been the typical? Okay.
Are they all here?
So.
I thought John.
I thought John, he may have had to leave at the moment. Well, looking to pleasure of the Council on this, we, again, have these applications before us, and looking for input on how you would like to handle this. Is Mr. Nichols still here? Let's see him, let's see other applicants that we have here. Got at least one, and depending on whether Mr. Nichols is able to come back. Would the Council like to hear the one applicant that we have before us and give?
Actually, there's, from what I can tell from the audience, is four here, so I think given those who served on the Commission, if they'd like to speak, and I think that that would be appropriate.
I presumed, yeah, the members that are already on there didn't want to make it sound like you weren't, but absolutely, should've said that better, new, new applicants that were not, not currently on the Commission. All right, why don't we start with our current members, give a brief one or two-minute presentation, your thoughts of, you know, there's a sample list of questions that you may or may not have seen, and you're welcome to follow that, or give a few comments about your experience and directions, and I'll start with Mr. Christiansen, since you're right there before me. Do you wanna defer?
I'd like to. The new chairman.
Certainly, yeah, that's your prerogative.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is David Warner. I have been nominated and elected by the fellow commissioners to serve as the Chair in the upcoming session. Obviously, that would be, that is the pleasure of the City Council. The last time, the first time that I was appointed to this position by the City Council, I was not present. Apparently, there was great debate, and I was appointed. I happened to be here this evening. I'm not familiar with the list of questions, but I can tell you that I have enjoyed being a member of the Planning Commission over the past few years, and I look forward to continuing as Chair over the coming year. My view of being a Planning Commissioner is that I'm acting in the public interest, and we look at items to see whether they are compatible with our community and the general plan, and to tell you the truth, I haven't had too many exciting things in front of me. I think all of the exciting things happened before I came on, and given the economy the way it is, who knows what's in store for us. I don't really have more to add at this point in time unless there's any questions I can answer. I, I don't know what's on the list, so.
I think you've covered some of them. There's just some general questions about, you know, what you see as, as your role and how you've participated, so the only one, I guess I might ask all of you, there's one that I kinda like, looking 10 years into the future, what's your vision of Loma Linda? Very broad, but just any brief comments?
Yes. I found it quite interesting. I was looking on my phone earlier, and I have Google Maps, and what I was trying to do, Mr. Mayor, is figure out how you can get from one side of Loma Linda to the other safely on a bicycle. I hail from Portland, Oregon, and I just saw something the other day that Portland, Oregon is number two in the world for being bike-friendly. And I thought, you know, this is a small community, university town, we're known for some special things, and we ought to have a healthy community. Riverside is taking charge with having a healthy community, ways of walking, getting around. And I was wondering what Loma Linda can do to, in this era of four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, $10 gallon gas? I mean, let's look in the future, 10 years from now, how much is fuel going to be? And should the people who work in this community be able to live in this community and not have to drive on the freeway? Should there be public transportation, light rail coming in so that we don't have traffic jamming up our intersections? And parking lots full of temporary, or people who come here and work during the day and leave and cause traffic jams and pollution? So, I would like to see this university town, this health community, be one where they can ride the bicycle, not have to be offended by cigarette smoke as they ride down the street. And I think it's all part of the, of the theme that we have, and that's, actually, you know, maybe it's not a 10-year plan, maybe it's a 20-year plan, 25-year plan, but that's kind of future I envision.
Any other questions?
Do you, since you've been on the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Do you, are there any changes to the structure? When I say the structure, I don't mean the personnel structure, but I mean the way it operates, the way the City Council reacts to it. Is, are there any changes that need to be made to make it more efficient? Do you get enough direction from Council? Do you feel, what? Any comment on that?
We, we get some great direction from staff, and I think there's been times when we're trying to get a feel for what it is that we want the city, you know, when, when an applicant comes and says, "I've got this idea, I've got this project, I'd like to, you know, get it constructed." And the question is, sometimes, I, I think earlier was like, well, this isn't quite what we're looking for. How do we get the message out to the community of what the city's looking for? And, and I think the staff has been very responsive to that, and I think to a certain extent, we've saw direction. I've recently been looking at some things to see, you know, how Planning Commission can interact more often, more frequently, and communicate with City Council as to the kind of vision that the City Council has for the city 10, 15, 20, 25 years from now. I, I think that's important, that we all see the vision, but it's important that we, that the Planning Commission understand what the City Council's vision is, and, you know, we've had the general plan that's been worked on, it's been amended, changes have come through, but that's, that's the general plan for now. What's the vision in the far future?
Any further questions for Mr. Warner? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Christiansen, Commissioner Chris.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me come up. In answer to, to the question, what do you see in the 10 years in the future? For the last eight years, you've seen me sitting out here. The reason that I come to every City Council meeting that I can is to get direction. Just listen, to get direction. We on the City, on the Planning Commission must be a quasi-judicial, independent buffer zone between the City Council and all the paperwork that goes before a project begins. We run through that, we look at land issues and land issues only. We are by law not to take into consideration economic issues, but we do look at land issues. And the reason that you see me sitting out here is because I want to hear and read in between the lines and try to get a feel for how the elected body feels this city should progress. And I feel that's the one thing that my major role is to listen to evidence as it's brought forward, to make decisions based on what I hear and what the evidence that has been brought forward is, and send it to you with the recommendations that we have. I think it is very, very important that the Planning Commission not be politicized. I think that it must be an independent buffer zone to give you projects as our recommendations come forward to you, as purely recommendations. come forward to you, as purely recommendations, just recommendations, based on how we feel, how this relates to the land use of Loma Linda. And having been on the planning commission for eight years, it's been an incredible learning curve, I'll tell you that, starting out as sort of gravel rouser, and settling down and learning how to, with the city attorney's help, keep my mouth shut and listen and learn more, and learn more from listening than from making long-winded speeches like I'm trying to make right now. Thank you very much for your consideration. I have considered it a pleasure. Any questions?
One question. You've been on the planning commission quite some time. Do you feel that there's a problem in the city with the city council interfering with the planning commission agenda decisions or being unduly pressured to arrive at a certain result by the city council?
I've never had that feeling.
Nope.
Not once. In fact, I've more than, more often, most of all, I have felt that the city council has let the planning commission be an independent body. Almost insisted on that, yes. Any other questions?
By the way, I don't know how many people here remember the time when the city council also sat as the planning commission, until 2:00 in the morning.
Hope we never go back to those days.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
I will just ask the next applicants in just the order. I have them randomly. Dr. Ubersack, if you could give us a brief presentation. I guess that's the one advantage disadvantage. Some of the new candidates for this position did fill out a fairly detailed information sheet, and that's very helpful, and I'd like you to expand on that or any other thoughts you might have for us tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll start with a brief introduction. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Lori Ubersack. I'm a professor of neurology at the university. I've lived in Loma Linda for six years, and I've been faculty at the university for seven. I'm applying for this planning commission position because I think I can bring something to the table that hasn't been there for the past several years. I think I'm fairly representative of the community in that I do work for the university, and I have a medical background, which is a little different than most city planners that you would think of. However, I'm raising a young family in the town. I plan to keep raising them here. I have an elderly mother who lives in the town, so I'm familiar with that aspect of the community. I'm one of the healthy people out jogging up and down the streets, and as I began my own personal protest recently against the gas prices, I started biking on the streets in Loma Linda, only to become intimately aware of some of the issues you were talking about on Benton Street and several of the other streets, and the lack of dedicated bike lanes that cannot be crossed by a car. So, I think that I'm pretty energetic, pretty fast learner. I really have come to love this town, even though I didn't grow up here. It's really fit mine and my family's needs. We fit in very well. We're into a very healthy lifestyle, very active lifestyle. For once, I'm not the only crazy person out jogging on the streets at 6:00 in the morning and eating vegetables. So, it's a place that I would like to see continue to develop as the special community that it is. I think it has some beautiful natural aspects to it that everybody in the council seems to have been trying to preserve over the last several years. It has some historical aspects, which I understand you're quite involved with, and I'd like to see some of those continue to be preserved. I'd like to see the city develop the way it has developed in the sense of maintaining a nice community aspect, allowing businesses to flourish, and the university and the core businesses of this community to continue to expand without losing what's special about the community. So, that would be what I would say in a nutshell. And if you'd like any further comments, I'd be happy to give them to you.
I presume, since you're an employee of the medical center at the university, you would have a conflict of interest with any projects that would come before you from that group, wouldn't you?
Yeah, like four-fifths of the council. But yes, I would.
And by the way, it's a good question to ask, I suppose, of everybody. I presume either one of you have a conflict of interest. You do? You have a conflict. You do not.
It's a company town.
Any other questions, comments? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's see. Next on my list of applicants is Miguel Rojas.
Good evening. As an architect, I've had the privilege of working in one of the most dynamic and challenging regions in this country, which is Southern California. I've worked for a number of offices in very dynamic and cutting-edge cities such as West Los Angeles, Old Town Pasadena, and Glendale. I've worked on a number of projects such as new communities, redevelopment areas, projects where there was a revitalization of old downtowns. And of course, now I've resided in this community for over 18 years and presented a number of interesting projects to this committee as well. I have tried to be very active in this community. I have four children, so I have to be very active in their activities as well. So, I bring a broad range of experience to this position, and I really am very interested in seeing this community grow and develop into the kind of community that I think it can be, one that stresses its health roots and that will address many of the issues that a growing city faces, such as traffic and proper development in an orderly and sensible manner.
As I recall, you have been an architect on a number of projects that have come before the city planning commission and the city council. And as I recall, some of those were very nicely done. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
I guess the question I have is, do you have enough architectural work in Loma Linda that a conflict of interest? If you were the architect on a project that came before city council, I presume you would declare a conflict of interest on that?
Obviously.
Is that, is that, is that going to be a serious problem in your, in your work? That, I mean, you're doing enough work in Loma Linda so that every third project comes, you're going to?
Well, I just do the projects that come to me. Some of them are here in the city, some are not. Again, having been here this number of years, obviously, I've gotten to know some people, and they've gotten to know me, but I think the quality of work that I present has been something that I think could be a plus and will be a plus. But of course, there will be some projects that may present a conflict of interest.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to join. I know some of your projects, I've had a chance to look at, have been very nice, so...
Thank you.
If not, thank you very much. And the last application I believe we have on file is Mr. Nichols. Don't see him at the moment. Was here earlier and must have had to go.
I totally have no entity.
I'm going to probably be out of place as mayor, still getting used to cheering meetings, but I am going to jump right in with Mr. Nichols. Obviously, several of us on this dais have worked with him as a council member. He is obviously well-known to us, and I think performed an excellent job on the council. And the other big draw for me is the architectural background. When we started the planning commission, we had for a number of years, two architects on the planning commission, and I think their expertise is very valuable, since certainly that's the direction they're dealing with, and I believe that's a valuable resource. Again, overstepping my bounds of cheering the meeting, but I am going to put in a plug for Mr. Nichols. Anyway, I think those are the applications that we have on file. We have the choice of going forward tonight, which I tend to lean toward simply because there is work to be done, but certainly if the majority of council feels it would be better to get more information, that's another direction as well. So, it's up to the council at this time if they would like to move forward with nominations or go any other directions for these three positions.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we retain Mr. Warner, Mr. Christensen. If we can get that out of the way first, then perhaps we can go to the...
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Only discussion I will have, I would like to consider on a one-by-one position, so I will vote no, and that's, but anyway, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion and second say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
It fails on a 3-2 vote. Since I jumped in with both feet in the water, I, on Mr. Nichols, I'm going to bring him up first. Probably not appropriate for me to nominate, but I would ask for his consideration.
Do we, do we need to, because there was a resignation, do we need to decide who's in which class? Or do we have three members for a full term?
My understanding was the term of the individual that resigned just completed. Correct me if I'm wrong, if there will be a different time period for any of the three?
Mr. Varnum's term would have expired in 2010, so the replacement would expire at that time also.
I stand corrected then.
The others are four-year terms?
That's my understanding. Four years, correct. So, we do have a two-year term and a...
Three years.
Three years, and three-year terms. Council, what's your collective wisdom?
Your motion is, Mr. Nichols?
It was for Mr. Nichols. I will admit, I didn't realize we had the different terms and so forth, so...
So, his term would be, he's taking Mr., he would take Varnum's place?
That's for us to decide.
Oh, I see. So, Varnum 2010, and the other ones will expire in 2011?
2011.
2011.
Looking for potential motion and second on Mr. Nichols and which term that would be.
I second for Mr. Nichols, and I would like for him to be on a four-year term.
Two or three?
Three, sorry.
Did I hear a motion on that?
What was that again?
For Mr. Nichols.
You can make the motion, and there hasn't been a...
Okay. I make a motion that we nominate Mr. Nichols to a three-year term as planning commission.
I'll second that.
Three-year, and that would expire in 2011?
2011.
2011.
I've heard a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Now, I'd be willing to support that if we have some understanding on another principle. Generally, in the council in the past, even though there have been differences of opinion within the community, people who have been incumbents from different points of view have been reappointed. And I'm wondering if there's support, if Mr. Nichols is appointed to this position, if there'd be support to appoint the other two incumbents to additional terms?
Think that would be the next item for discussion. As chair of the meeting, I would prefer that we act on this, and then we can bring that up as our next discussion point, if that's acceptable.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion on Mr. Nichols, say aye.
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 Opposed? I believe that carries unanimously. Mr. Zipri, Councilman Zipri?
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and nominate Mr. Warner for the next term of, I guess, is it three years?
It's up to you, either the two-year or three?
I'll go and make that, I'll make that nomination.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Fails 3-2. The next individual, if we look at the incumbents, would be Mr. Christensen, and would like to ask, in the same sequence, consideration.
Okay, I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Christensen to a three-year term.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
Fails 3-2. Looking for nominations for...
I nominate Dr. Ubersack.
For three-year or two-year term?
Two-year would be fine with me, if that's a pleasure of the council.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. 3-2 approved. The second, or I'm sorry, the final seat that we have...
I think Mr. Peterson voted yes on that.
I'm sorry, misunderstood. 4-1, thanks for the correction. The final position that we have, I believe we have one individual. Do I hear a nomination?
I nominate Mr. Rojas for a three-year term.
Aye, seconded nomination.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Just the one comment, there's never a clean, easy way of doing these things. I'll state my opinion, and let the rest of the council decide what comments, if any, they would like to make. First of all, I would like to thank Commissioners Christensen and Warner for their service. They have devoted great energy and resources to this planning commission. There always are considerations that go into any judgment. I'll speak strictly for myself. I have probably been a little bit obsessed by the architect angle, and I've been wanting to see increased representation of the architect angle, and feel that expertise that architects will bring is very important. The other individuals, I think, all bring unique aspects and qualifications, and again, it boils down to overall, I guess, sometimes gestalt. But I want to again thank the current members for their tireless efforts and a job well-done, even though we might have different opinions as far as what all individuals we have appointed tonight. So, thank you, even though I know it's probably disappointment, or maybe some of you, it's actually relief, I don't know. Every time I run for council, I wonder, you know, why you do it, and it'd be a relief not to. But anyway, that's another whole issue. Comments from council?
I just wanted to kind of echo your sentiments. I think that those who decide to volunteer and give their time and energy... I think that those who decide to volunteer and give their time and energy towards city service are, those individuals are rare, and I think that can be seen in the fact that we have a lot of committees here, and if you keep looking at it, we have the same people on those committees for many, many years. And I think that's just a reflection of not having new faces. And so when we do have new faces that have shown interest, I think it's important for us to consider those new faces, because I think it brings a different aspect to the representation in our city. So I want to echo Mayor Brower's earlier comments. I want to thank Mr. Christensen, Mr. Werner for their hard work. Mr. Christensen, you by far, you probably work harder than any other planning commission I've seen. You've attended every city council meeting, and I hope to continue to see you here and continue to get your input. I think it's valuable nevertheless, and we want to see you continue to participate in our community. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I wanted to echo the thanks to the commissioners who've done a great job carrying a heavy burden for a long time, and it is with a heavy heart that we bid you farewell from that responsibility, but we don't think that this will be the last time that you'll serve our community. We think that there's a lot of opportunity in the future, and we look forward to your input on multiple city actions, and who knows, maybe you'll be running against us in a few years for council.
Not out of the realm of possibility.
Well, my only point, I reiterate, is that traditionally, when we've had people who've served well, even from different points of view, they have been left as incumbents. And I will point out that that has been pretty traditional. So we are going a little bit against a longstanding tradition, which has been time-honored. And you know what I'm speaking of, gentlemen. So I'll leave it there. I think these people have served very, very well. I think that some of the decisions that have been considered in the past have been exceptionally difficult. There are certainly going to be fewer projects now, because the economy is much slower, and that has been pointed out. But I just want to make for the record that modest point. And I do want to join everybody else in thanking these gentlemen for a good job well done.
I believe traditions are important, but I also believe that we need to follow the options that we do have, and I believe we had the option of either reappointing them or appointing new members. So I think it's in the best interests of the city that we follow the rules and the laws, and all the traditions are important.
Obi, the only point I would make, very briefly, is that there are times and people who have been reappointed who had political views different than mine, and they have been supported in the end for reappointment. So I just wanted to point out, it's a small, it's a little shift from the way it has been done, which in other times has favored more your political philosophy. You just need to be aware of that.
Councilman Peterson, any final comments or move on to the next item?
Next item.
All right. Next item is senior center board, and we have, I believe, three vacancies listed. Dr. Trump has declined consideration with reappointment. Again, would like to publicly thank Dr. Trump. He has been so active and involved in our community for so many years, it just won't seem right without him being there, but understand that that's necessary due to personal reasons.
Haven't seen him for a long time.
So anyway, we have a recommendation to reappoint George Pindred to a three-year term, and then we still will have, I believe, several vacancies. So our options either to re-advertise or reduce committee numbers. What's the consent to the direction of the council?
Move to reappoint George Pindred?
Do I hear a second? Second, any opposition? Seeing none, approved. What about the issue of the vacancies? Shall we reduce committee number or re-advertise for appointment and put this back on with hopefully some more appointments and applications?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We did receive an application laid from Elijah, I think it's pronounced Esquia. He is a social worker with the VA Medical Center, and at one time, we did have a representative from the VA hospital on the senior board, so you might want to consider that appointment this evening.
What's the direction the council would like to take?
Do you happen to know, does he live in La Molinda?
He does not give a residence address. He would be representing the VA hospital on the board.
I don't mind reconsidering, but I truly believe that we should try to re-advertise. I think there's a number of seniors in our community, and I believe that if we maybe let them know about this particular board, that we may be able to get more volunteers for it.
Is there a consensus to re-advertise, and then we'll bring this back in September, pending the results?
Also, I'm concerned, it appears that Lisa Berry is probably inactive member in this committee as well, so...
If there's a consensus, we will direct staff to re-advertise, bring back hopefully some further applications in September, and then move forward with the one reaplication as mentioned. Traffic advisory committee. We have one vacancy and one application on file. That sounds like hopefully a pretty good match. Direction of council? Actually, we need two members, that's right, because we have a vacancy with someone that's sitting on the dais here tonight. So we have one application on file, is that correct?
It looks like we only have one vacancy.
Well, we have Don Bender's expiring, and then you exited the committee, so that would be a reap and a vacancy.
It's a matter of terminology, but potentially we have two spots to fill, correct, Pam? Direction of council on the one application that we have on file?
I nominate Mr. Nelson. He's actually, I've come to a number of meetings. In fact, we have, we even joked in our committee that he's spent so much time in committee, he should really become a member, so I guess now he can become a member.
I'll second that.
Any opposition to that appointment? Hearing none, appointed. Do we want to re-advertise? Do we want to leave things as is with the vacancy? Ms. O'Cam?
Well, you have Mr. Bender, who has been a member, whose term is expiring.
And he chooses to remain on the committee?
If you're looking to make any...
Yes, we are.
Yes, he has.
Okay, I nominate Don Bender for another term.
Second.
Good, I think that one's unanimous without asking, but anyway, great. So we're still left with one vacancy, is that correct?
I think we're full now.
That fills all of them, then.
We have a complete committee.
I'm sorry, great, thank you. That's why we have you here to keep us straight. Trails development committee, and we have, I believe, five members to appoint, is what I understand, and we have three individuals that have expressed an interest to continue. Can I hear a nomination on those three?
I nominate that we reappoint all those individuals who have served before.
Second. Is Mr. Walling, is his term continuing, or is his expiring?
His term is continuing.
Okay.
I've heard a motion to reappoint the three individuals. Did I hear a second?
Yeah, I second.
I'm sorry. A second. Any opposition? Seeing none, unanimous. So we still have, as I do the simple math, I believe...
Looks like there was a, there was...
We have one application.
Yeah, there was an application. Was there a vacancy?
There was, there's two more, apparently.
So the application on file, do I hear some direction from council?
I nominate Mr. Embiid.
I'll second that.
Any opposition to that action? Hearing none, unanimous. So that's four people. Do we have one more then, is that correct?
We would have a complete committee.
So we just needed the four total?
Correct.
Okay, great, that is...
I just wanted to make a brief comment. I was just looking at the Trails Committee's calendar, and during the whole year, there's been seven meetings that have been canceled, and I'm just hoping that this coming year we'll have more regular meetings with not as many cancellations.
I don't think that'll be a problem for that committee. They've got some land to work on now.
You know, I think I'm liaison, have been at least for the last couple of years, and that committee, like some of the others, they meet when it's necessary, but at certain times, there haven't been pressing items, as though then they have not. But I suspect Councilmember Riggsby's right. I think there's been a fair number of developments recently that will probably keep them very busy.
Very good. Any thing we missed on those, or we got what we need to do on that, I believe? All right, the next item is appointment of council members as liaisons to the city committees and commissions. Again, for just general public, we felt a few years back, sometimes these committees didn't have a go-to person to turn to if they had questions or issues that they needed to work with. This is not intended for any of us to, you know, be high-handed and tell them what to do. It's simply to identify that resource for them to turn to and interact as needed. The first one is the budget committee. Pam, do you have the list of all those here? I guess it's on my next page, if I turn to it. And that's been Councilman Peterson.
Budget committee?
Yes.
Since when?
Would you like to continue nonetheless in such activities, or what's the direction of council?
I would like to consider serving on that committee, or the liaison, I should say.
Have a volunteer. Councilman Peterson? Okay, that's, anyone else throwing their hat in the ring? If not, we'll ask Councilman Popescu to serve as a liaison. Historic Commission has been Councilman Ziprick. Any opposition to continuing that?
I'm happy to continue.
Are you willing? Great. Connected Communities, Councilman Riggsby, any, any one else that would be interested? Are you willing to continue on that?
I'm willing to continue.
Great. Parks Recreation was myself. I'm willing to continue on that, unless someone else wants to serve as liaison. Hearing none, continue. Senior Center Board, we have vacancy here that need to fill. Any volunteers or interest in...
I would like to serve on that.
Okay. Any other considerations, or Mr. Popescu, Councilman Popescu for Senior Center Board? Consensus? Traffic Advisory, Mayor Protem Riggsby? Are you willing to continue?
Sure, unless there's someone else who's...
Anyone else willing to, or seeing none, continue that?
Well, I don't want to step on anybody's desires.
Trail Development Committee, Councilman Ziprick, are you willing to continue?
Yes, yes.
Is agreeable to all? Thank you. North Central Neighborhood, Councilman Peterson, are you willing? Thank you. And then the Audit Committee, myself and the one vacancy, again, I'm willing to continue. It probably, just throw out, would it make sense for the Budget Committee liaison to be on here, or it could be Mayor, Mayor Protem, I guess, that we had before?
It looks like last time it was Mayor and Protem. Is there some definition for this?
No, that's just been tradition.
Okay. We can keep some traditions.
Serve that out. Direction of committee, or council, Riggsby and Brower on Audit Committee? Is that acceptable?
Sure.
Hearing no opposition, so be it. All right, believe...
This is, I've been on the North Central Neighborhood Committee for, well, since the last time, since the last election, I guess it was. And I always get a notice when that meeting occurs. I have never received a notion, a notice ever for a Budget Committee meeting. Never received a notice that one was occurring. I was not even aware that I was on this committee.
You're welcome to come.
So...
That was my experience with a solid waste board.
Well, we have no doubt of your dedicated service on many boards, so not a problem. Great, all right, let's move on to item number 16, designating a delegate and alternate for League of Cities in September meeting. Any council members planning on going to that?
I don't, I wouldn't mind going, unless we sent two people or just one person.
Potentially, believe, certainly up to two people, and...
Who's attended in the past?
I have in the past, and I think probably all of us occasionally have been here for a while. It's worthwhile if you...
I have a lot to learn, so I hope to interact with other cities and try to get as much input as I can.
That'd be great, and if that's acceptable, as our voting delegate, anyone else be attending as alternate, either council or staff?
Is it alternate or two attendees?
By the way, the...
We, I believe, have only one voting position, and then the alternate, but certainly, speak for myself, I think, you know, certainly attendance of more than one is very desirable, even though it may not be a voting member.
I don't know if all council people are aware, but the League of California Cities General Meeting has always met in Monterey, end of July. Their whole schedule's completely changed now. That does not occur anymore, or at least it's not occurring. It did occur this year, it's not occurring anymore.
This is the annual business meeting, and it always is around September, but the meeting you're talking about is, it was changed to May, I believe.
But not in Monterey?
That's correct.
Where did they meet this time? In San Diego?
I have no idea.
Because there's...
I think, I think I saw a note, they met at Lake Tahoe, I believe.
Something has totally changed with the League of California.
I think they did something there.
And I think that is, you know, speaking of traditions, this council, and I'm sure will continue, it has, I think, been quite careful with travel expenses and not going to frilly meetings, and certainly, these league meetings, I think all of us that have attended have brought back much value compared to any expenditures, and so I think it's very worthwhile. Any potential alternate, anyone else plans to attend? Seeing none, we'll leave it at that. If someone else decides to, or is able to attend, we can bring that back and...
Haven't we usually designated, did we mention the city manager, the alternate usually?
I think I asked if any staff was planning to attend, not hearing any immediate.
If I go, it would be just for the day and not for the, usually when the conferences are local, I don't intend to stay down. I go for a day, maybe two at the most.
Shall we designate city managers alternate for at least whatever time you're able to be there, for some reason, Councilman Popescu's not. All right, brings us to reports of councilmen.
Very briefly, we had talked sometime back about the solar issue and developing a solar plan for the community, and I had spoken to the city manager recently and learned that there had been some developments that would favor our project, and so I was gonna, even though it's not an agendized item, I think he had some information to give us about some legislation that has just been passed and signed by the governor.
Yes, Councilman Ziprick. I reported to you some months ago that for us to embark upon a program of allowing citizens to utilize funding through the city, in other words, tax-exempt funding for solar, it would take a change in the state law. Well, that law has now been changed...
Well, that law has now been changed. The governor signed the bill yesterday, as a matter of fact, and several cities are embarking upon those types of programs and we're happy to pursue that if that's the desires of the council.
I think we should put it on an early agenda item of what, I think all of us have heard the rumor that Southern California Edison is looking at up to a 30% rate increase this fall for at least some categories. And I think our economy is going to be strangled on the cost of energy at all levels. I think we should proceed as quickly as we can to look for all possible ways of mitigating that and this may be one of the most feasible we can come up with. I don't know how fast we can move on it, but I think once other communities catch on, I think we'll all be trying to do the same thing at once and I think we should get ahead of the curve if we can.
Interestingly enough, a week or so ago, my nephew, my grandnephew actually, who's a mechanical engineer, just graduated from Mollawala, is down here doing a residency of some type and we were driving around, looking at all of the new warehouses that are going up particularly over here, you know, on the north side. And the thought kind of occurred to us at that point, along with the big power station down there, that somebody ought to start a business leasing the roofs of those big buildings and placing solar energy panels up there to produce power. So, the first thing we did when we got back to the house was to go online and do some investigating online and guess what? Southern California Edison is about to do that now. So, they are going to start attempting to lease acreage on the top of buildings to place solar panels.
We can't have ours.
Beat them to it.
The concern, appreciating the value of Edison, if they charge 30% more for that electricity, it won't be as much benefit as if we could mitigate the cost of electricity. There's a concern here for our community and some other communities. I think we're going to have to be pretty aggressive in pushing for alternatives or we're going to be economically strangled and I, a lot of us are familiar with the T. Boone Pickens ads. I think we're all aware that there's about, is it $2 billion a...
A day.
A day, leaving this country for energy. So, anyway, that's, we're a very small city, but I think if we're aggressive, I think it will certainly set a good pattern and show maybe some larger cities what can be done. We've already been in the lead on some things and I think we should enhance that as much as we can. I think we all agree on that. I just thought that since the governor's signed the law, we should probably ask staff to come back as quickly as possible. I don't know what we need to do next to, except have staff come back very quickly with a feasibility report or something on how to...
Correct.
Ask staff to come back with a report as soon as possible on how to carry forward now that the law has been passed and signed.
Agree.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Comments, council members? Just a few real quick ones, the one follow-up on the Edison that's related. I understand there's been some activity in the county of Riverside with some of the cities and have had meetings with Edison as far as trying to amend the baseline electrical rates. I think all of us get very frustrated and upset when we see our summer bills and see baseline rates that, you know, basically enough to operate a refrigerator and almost two light bulbs and that's it and you go over the baseline, the rates get jacked up extremely high. That group in Riverside argued that, again, the higher temperatures in this area were not fully taken account into some of those baseline rates and those baselines should be significantly higher. I would like to see if we can explore with staff, with Edison, going along with whatever agreement has been worked out since we had joined Riverside County. Should be very easy to do, I would think, so I'd like to see if we can look into that adjustment of baseline. The second quick thing I went as our representative to the annual joint powers insurance administration annual meeting last week down in La Palma, I guess it is, just 30 seconds, that's our, the entity that self-insures a number of cities, it's now up to 120 cities and government agencies, peers from all indications, it's reasonably well-funded and in solid financial shape and appears to be providing us some excellent service and reports were all encouraging. Those are the two items I had to add. Any, any other final comments? If not, any reports from officers? Seeing none, I've failed miserably. I thought we could get this meeting done in two hours and didn't even come close, but we'll keep trying. Unless there's any reason not to, we'll adjourn this city council meeting. Just to be certain, were there any issues that we need to complete and close session afterwards that it would be better if I didn't adjourn or did we get a completion of everything needed?
We're through.
Okay, so we are adjourned as council meeting.
Here's where my inexperience shows again. I'm not going to go as fast as... Okay, we'll open a meeting of the redevelopment agency. Are there, do you comment on the closed session at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I did give my report on that previously, if you recall.
And that was...
And that was that we met and conferred regarding the real property negotiations and gave direction to staff. There's no further action to report.
Thank you very much. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No.
Are there any oral reports from the audience on non-agenda items? Seeing none. General items number two.
Move approval, accept report and dispersment of funds.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to add that I've had the opportunity as being a new chamber member to attend a couple of events and I would like to urge Mayor Brower to also join the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, no further discussion. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Are there any other comments or reports? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.